This is the March 12th, 2020 meeting of the Kuschna Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item of business is the secretary's report from January 29th. Anyone have any clarifications to the minutes or questions? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the secretary's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the financial report. Yes, you have the financial report as of today. You'll see that we're 67.1% spent out in salary line, 91.7% spent out in operating, for an overall total of 72.3%. I know you may see the 91.7% for operating and be like, "What's going on?" But it's March of the fiscal year, so for being, you know, just a few months away from the end of the fiscal year, I think we're doing quite well. Salary lines are where they're supposed to be. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary. If you notice something, please ask, of course. The energy line reflects our ever-source bills through March, so even though I did have some concerns about that a couple of months ago, for the March bill, we're down 12% from last year in the amount of electric use. We're using 12% less than the same time last year, so I think we're sort of evening out with that. I do believe that the large bill we saw two months ago, with that huge increase, is attributed to leaving the heated walkway on for a 12-hour period a few times. We did that at least three times in December. So we would certainly, I think, need to evaluate that maybe on a case-by-case going forward. If we're closing at 5:00 and a storm is expected at 7:00 a.m. the next day, it's probably better to just have someone come over, which is what we did this past weekend. When we were closing at 5:00, we knew there was a storm potentially coming early Saturday morning, and Jen did come over, but then we realized it was a little too late for it to have had its desired effect, so we'll have to plan that differently going forward. But I do think we cannot leave it on for 12 hours at a time.
At least it worked.
It worked, right. It worked, for sure, but then we're hitting some, that January, the bill we got in January for December's ever-source use was kind of scary to open because I think it was the largest ever-source bill we've ever had. So if we know that's a tribute, you know, is an attributing factor, we can work on that in the future.
No way they can put a timer on it?
They do have a timer on it, but if we, say if it's on a Friday or a Saturday, we close at 3:00, and the storm's coming Saturday night, media-
You don't care.
But if we're turning it on at 3:00 on Saturday, and we're running it for 12 hours, and the storm doesn't end up coming, or it comes at 4:00 a.m., and then at that point the walkways off, we've run it for 12 hours for nothing when there's no, in other words, if nothing's happening until the middle of the night or early the next morning, it's been running all that time.
Because the timer is just on hours, it's not, like, you can't set it for, like, a specific time? That's the, that's the one-
Initially, you might be remembering from when we first got the heated walkway, it seemed like there was a switch, a sensor, that when that sensor, based on moisture and temperature, flipped on, it could stay on for a 12-hour period, let's say. But that switch, the sensor, doesn't work. We, that's definitely been determined by the electricians who've looked at it, so that's not an option.
So you have to manually turn it on manually?
So we had the manual timer installed.
You don't think there's a way that you could, it could be set up, so you could dial it on the phone, turn it on?
That would, that would require having access, someone having remote access into the building, which would require us having a-
Not remote to the, either of them?
Well, if I was doing it from my phone from home, right, but it would be remoting into that software that's controlling it. So I'd kind of rather just drive over here than be remoting into it from my phone personally. Or a trustee who lives in town, who's a little bit closer than I am, might be willing to come over and turn it on if need be.
Right.
I mean, or, you know, anyone who has-
How long does it take to heat up?
I think there's a couple of factors that depend on that, and I don't, I can't give an exact time. I just know that by turning it on at 7:30 this past Saturday morning, it was not melted at 9:00 a.m., so it's, it didn't-
It also had that, like, Saturday, had that, like, icy crunchy stuff-
It wasn't regular snow.
It was weird, like, with slippery stuff.
Had it been, like, regu, a regular snowfall and not so much the ice, then maybe it would have been fine. So I think there's too many, I mean, when we've turned it on here in an active snowfall, you see it start to work almost right away, so it didn't occur to me that by turning it on at 7:30, it wouldn't melt it quickly. But I think because of what was on there, by the time it was turned on, it was too late.
I think so, maybe if we would have turned it on at, like, 6:00-
Maybe.
Then maybe by 9:00-
At least maybe it would have been, like, loose enough to shovel, like, you know, without any difficulty or, but, I mean, it certainly would not be a hardship for me to drive up here at 11 or 12 o'clock at night and turn it on. If I had to do that, you know, I'm just saying, if I had to do that, you know.
Maybe it just won't snow anymore.
You could get stuck on nice lane on the way home.
Yeah, not, not if it's not an active fall yet, or if it's just a light at the beginning of a storm, but I think we could take that sort of case-by-case. Because if we get into some kind, we would need software that would come at an expense to the library to, for me to be able to access it. I mean, the timer that's there now is not a soft, like, a programmable software types of manual turn-the-switch timer, so to get some, a timer with software, we're, I don't know how much that would cost, and I think for the few times we'd have to use it that way, you know, we also have a staff member who lives right around the corner who may be willing to pop over and do that if a trustee wasn't available, so I think we say it just like case-by-case. But I appreciate the idea of software. So anyway, back to budget and stuff, unless you have any specific questions about any line that looks off to you or concerning, but otherwise, I'm comfortable where it's at right now. Anyone have anything?
No.
We need a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, new business. First item on the agenda is a request by the Friends, which there's no, we're going to table that because there's no Friends representative available today, so we will table that to the next meeting. The proposed annual service agreement with Airmasters HVAC. So, as you know, we had that new controller installed by Airmasters, the Chase controller. Everything seems to be going okay with that so far, and back in December when they gave us the quote, the controller, they also recommended at the time that we get the service agreement, and you might remember, I had sent that along back then. It said, "Annual agreement, a little over $900 annually." After I sent it out, Jen came back with some questions, and we didn't get a response from Airmasters right away. I did end up getting a response from them, and my recommendation is you don't go with the service agreement for a couple of reasons, but some of the big ones include, they're referring a lot to remote support within the service agreement, and they've known for the five years we've been working with them, but I guess they forgot, they should have known. They cannot remote in to our software. Our internet is provided through sales, through the sales network. If they were to have to network in to their software, that would come at another cost to the library. We'd have to get them set up with a port down in the basement, because they cannot come in on the sales line. Sales is not allowing that. I don't know what the cost of that would be, but I know when it, that was mentioned five years ago, at that time the board said, "No, thanks, they don't need to remote in, it's a convenience factor," and more so for them, but they don't need to remote in.
And then if that doesn't work, you've got to get another guy, put him on a main contract.
Correct, and, and the agreement only includes two hours of remote support for the year. We're talking two hours, so if that's only two, if they can't solve it in a two-hour, but they're here anyway, so, and I don't, I don't think, it's a web-based product, so it's actually a little disappointing to me that they just can't log in somewhere remotely if it's a web-based product and figure it out remotely since it's web-based, but they can't. So I don't, I think that, you know, they're also talking about the, doing the updates twice a year to the system. They never talked about doing updates on that system before. It's the same system, it's just a different mechanism that's running it, so if you just, you know, paid them to come in once a year to do those updates, it probably wouldn't cost $900. Or a different vendor, which is still an option to explore. So I just, I don't recommend getting locked into an annual agreement. He did end his answers, his email with the answers to Jen's questions, he did email with that. At the end of the day, the library is not required to have a service agreement. We highly recommend it. Well, of course they do, because it's $900, you know, that they might not get otherwise. But, you know, and if you decided not to do it right now, and then we determined in a year that, oh, they're the company worth sticking with, and we should get an annual agreement, then you could certainly get an annual agreement down the line, but my thought today is, it's not necessary.
Do you know that there are other vendors that, in this area, that handle an equipment?
There are other ones, and I, from what I've gathered from the little discussions I've had with Jim Merritt, there's some of the same issues with other vendors that, I mean, this is not looking unique. Some of the issues that we're having are not unique to this particular vendor, but yes, we could go somewhere else through, I mean, it might require some reconfiguration, which would come at a setup, like, an initial setup cost-
Right.
-but there could be the option to switch. So, I mean, my awesome, my thought on updates with any kind of technology, if the technology's working fine, why do the update unless you have to do the update? Like, so if they're coming in twice a year to run these updates, but the system's working fine, why would we be installing the updates? A lot of, I mean, the other companies that we deal with, with tech, say that all the time, there's not, if you're not required to do it, why, why mess with something with-
A lot of times when you put updates in, it takes you a couple of months after, you're running calls back and forth, back and forth-
Correct, which is a benefit to them also, because then you're-
Two units, exactly the same, you put the same update in both of them, one works fine, the other one gives you all kinds of problems.
Right, right. So that's my, my thought on that, and we could certainly change that down the line, but that's the biggest thought. I think I, I agree with that. Does anyone have anything else to say or an opinion, want to table that? Or visit it later, if, later, visit it later if necessary, we don't want to table it, we'll visit it again later if necessary.
Okay.
Want to say that? Okay. Libraries' role in the 2020 census. So you may have heard that it's a census year this year, the United States does that every 10 years. Okay, so today is the first day you could possibly receive a postcard letting you know about the census. It's, oh, well, excellent, I wonder if I got mine? Let's see, March 12th is day one for that, so they, they're rolling out throughout the United States, sending out postcards, letting people know the census is coming, and that there is an online component this year, so you can fill, take the survey online this year versus mailing it in or doing it by telephone. And I think they're making a real push, as with most other things, to do the online version. So this has been certainly on my radar for quite a few months, because the American Library Association has been talking about it for quite a few months, Public Library Association, Massachusetts Library Association, of the library's role in helping people take the census. Back in January, I attended a meeting sponsored by the Matta Poisonet Public Library, along with the Southeastern League of Women Voters, into how they could help out with census taking here in the library. There was a representative from the census who was at that meeting also, and we got some good ideas on what to do, and now it's sort of time to implement those. So as you know, we do have five public computers, so people are able to come in and use a library computer to take the online census. We have four laptops, so people are available, laptops are available to borrow if someone wants to sit in a quiet spot to take the census. We have excellent Wi-Fi in our building, so if someone has a device but doesn't have Wi-Fi at home, they can come here and take the census through their own device using our Wi-Fi. We're being encouraged to let everyone know why it's so important to take, actually take the census, and I think one of the best things that's been said to me about that is, I don't know where the quote comes from, but the quote is, "If you aren't counted," meaning if you don't take the census, "then you don't count when it comes time to figure out where money is going from the federal government." So that's a big determining factor of how libraries are funded, how after-school activity programs are funded, a lot of that is determined by census intake. So it's easy to do, it's quick, we have a, we've had for months posted on one of our bulletin boards, the sample questionnaire, so you can take a look at it before you fill it out. I know people do have concerns about the information they're providing in answers to questions on the census, but quite frankly, if you file your tax return, then the government already knows information about you, so nothing that's on there should be considered worrisome because you're revealing info that someone doesn't already know. And the, we've been asked to say that the Census Bureau, for quite a few months, if not a year, they've been working to make their website very secure, so that if you are taking, filling out the questionnaire online, your information is secure. So starting next week, we were supposed to have a representative here on Fridays from the Southeastern League of Women Voters to assist people if they had questions when taking, filling out the questionnaire. The idea was to leave the laptop set up for a few hours on Fridays in the community rooms, people could just walk in, and this representative would be there to answer questions, but unfortunately, that's been postponed right now due to the coronavirus, which we'll talk more about, but. So as of right now, we still have the internet available and devices available for people if they want to come in and take the census, but we don't know when we'll have anyone on hand to help out with that. And I do know also that the town clerk is going to schedule a meeting amongst department heads to talk about ways in which we can encourage a Kuschna residence to take the census. So I think that's about it. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention, so those postcards went out, you've got yours already, that's great, today's day one. After May 13th, if you have not taken, haven't mailed in the census, or made a phone call to fill it out, or done it online, that's when people start going to your door and ringing your bell to get you to take the census. So if you'd like to avoid a census taker showing up at your house, then it's best to get that all done prior to May 13th.
I would like.
I wouldn't like that job either. I mean, I-
They don't want to do it, and then you show up.
Yeah.
It's like, I think they get $20 an hour, or it was, um-
Yeah, they actually raised it because they were looking for more candidates, so they raised it above the 20. And I, any kind of sales job, that to me is sort of, you're making a sales pitch when you get there, even though it's not real, but you have to be a certain personality. I don't have that personality, but I appreciate those who do, and, but the way to avoid having them come is just to fill it out before they show up, and you don't have to worry about it. And the last day to do it is July 31st, but I think, you know, having attended a few meetings now, the Public Library Association conference was very focused on the importance of the census and how much people, you know, communities benefit from people actually filling it out, so I think after hearing all that, it's really, I see its value, so. So that's all I have to say about that. Okay? Were attendants at the Public Library Conference Association Conference? Yes, Public Library Association Conference, so. Really just wanted to thank you for allowing me to go. It's my first time at a national conference, as you know. I loved it, I thought it was, I got a lot more out of it than I expected to. I'm still going through, I brought home so much stuff, and I'm still sort of weeding through everything that I brought home, and, so I haven't actually even brought any of it here yet. I have a lot of information from various vendors and publishers, and they were giving away a lot of free, I do have some restaurant news in with that, yes, I did bring home some of those. But it was just so much packed into, I guess I never really understood how large it was going to be until I was there. I mean, the venue itself, Music City Center in Nashville, is humongous, but there were over 8,000 librarians and library workers in attendance, and hundreds of vendors, it's just, the exhibits hall was huge.
You had a good time.
I did, I just had a great time. The main themes of the conference, and I just want to mention those so I can also explain how, some of the stuff, I mean, we're obviously already doing here, it's things that are on any public librarian's radar, but the main themes this year were the importance of data collection, and I love statistics, I talk about statistics a lot with you, so I, you know, I use statistics a lot in determining the kind of programming we're going to offer or new material to add to the collection, that whole thing, which you know. But it was also using data collection to make sure that our collections and our programming represent the diversity within our population, and not just within the town of the Kuschna population, but towns, surrounding towns, and how we can meet those diverse needs. Inclusion was a big theme, how we can make our programming inclusive, how we make our collections inclusive. Social justice was a big theme this year as well, and equity. So I feel that we, we do have a very diverse collection here, we can certainly work on that, and we're going to, when we can find some time. I got some good methods for doing something called a diversity audit of the collection, where you kind of go through each item and see how it's meeting those diverse needs. One library that presented, I believe from Iowa, spoke about how they used their young adult collection, it's the smallest collection, which is pretty typical of most public libraries. Ours is certainly the smallest collection overall here, but they started with their young adult collection and literally went through every single book to see and made a chart of how those books are.
Oh.
Yeah. We don't have the staffing for that, they didn't either, so they had some clever ways of figuring out how to do that, and I'm hoping that at some point I can introduce that in with our staff. I mean, as you know, we have two recent library school graduates on our staff, and if I could, I mean, they're only, each year 19 hours a week, so together they barely make up a full-time position, but if I could somehow harness them into helping out with a diversity audit, I would love to see something like that happen, and I think for their professional development, it would be beneficial for them as well. But Bethany assists me with the purchasing of children's materials, Sandra assists me with the purchase of adult materials, everyone weighs in, and we take suggestions from patrons all the time as to things to add in, if there's a particular title that we don't own. So I think we're doing a really good job of making sure the collection is a patron-driven collection and represents the community well. I don't think I'm off-base when I say that, but a lot of the programs I attended were just sort of instilling that with us. So it also made me feel good that we're doing things that a lot of other libraries are doing. Another big theme was networking, networking within your community but beyond your community, beyond the schools, beyond town government, sort of getting out, doing outreach to unique institutions within your community. And then, of course, advocacy was another big one, advocating for your patrons, but also advocating for the library itself with, in the town, city government, state government, which affects federal government, that kind of stuff. So it was a lot, I mean, the days started at 7:30 in the morning, and the conference itself went to 6:00 every evening, and then there were after-conference activities, if you will, sponsored by vendors, so that you could go out and network with librarians at after-hours, after-conference hours, things. So I was out in my room for about, like, 15 and 16 hours every day, so it was a lot, but I think it was really beneficial, and once I can sort of compile everything, then I can work with the staff on how we can use those, you know, things that I've mentioned here, so that there is a direct benefit and showing that it's worth the time and the expense of going, so.
Do they have the conference every year?
No, the Public Library Association is only every two years, so the next one won't be until 2022. The American Library Association does an annual conference, but I feel, I'd heard from people prior to attending that for a public librarian, this is really the conference. And the American Library Association conference, of course, does things related to public libraries, but that's all libraries, it's academic, law, school, it's, it's everything, whereas this one is really focused on public librarianship, and, and they were right, so I was thrilled to be there. I also met with two vendors who were demonstrating their people-counting software, so I'm hoping that by our next meeting, depending on when that is, I can get some quotes from them about installing people-counting software so that we stop taking a manual count every hour of how many people are in the building. And then that would give us certainly a much more accurate number of how many people are in the building every day, so that when we're needing to report that to the state, we have a correct number, or closer to correct number. And there were multiple vendors displaying their summer reading incentives, and I've got some ideas that I still need to share with Bethany and Sandra about some different summer reading incentives than what we've offered in the past. So that's about it.
Sounds like a good conference.
It was great, and, yeah, I really appreciate the support and being able to go, so thank you for that. Director's report. Okay, so the director's report, we're going to deviate from just a little bit. I confirmed with the town clerk that we could do this under open meeting law, because I do need to discuss the coronavirus with you, and how it relates to the library. I think I would like to start this the same way that I've talked to other people in town. I think anyone who uses this building sees that it's a fairly clean building. We didn't just wake up two weeks ago and realize we need to clean this building. We do have a custodian who only works 12 hours, but when he's here, he is in that shift, you know, 12 hours a week, is disinfecting the building. We're already wiping down all of our bathroom surfaces, our doorknobs, our keyboards for the computers, anything that people are touching, because we're a public building, we're already wiping that all down. Certainly, as of the start of this week, we're wiping down everything a lot more than we have been. I've encouraged the staff to wipe down the staff keyboards and pens, countertops, anything that the staff is touching, that they can wipe that down, as much as they- anything that the staff is touching, that they can wipe that down as much as they feel is necessary throughout their shift. Certainly letting them know it's okay to go step away from the desk to wash your hands as much as you feel is necessary. We always have hand sanitizer year-round at the desk, so that's nothing new for us. It's still there as long as we don't run out. Throughout the day, I've been going into the bathrooms to wipe those down additionally with disinfectant and the public door handles as well. Where we can leave doors open, we're leaving those doors open so that we're not touching the handles. At the start of the week, I posted just some very basic signage from the CDC website about how to wash your hands and staying home if you don't feel well. Things that I think of as common sense, but maybe they're not, or maybe it's helpful to have that reiterated. So we, at the start of the week, I had posted some things like that. And throughout the week, we've sort of expanded on that. Today, we hung up some signage in the bathroom with some fun songs that you can sing maybe while you're washing your hands to encourage people to keep it going a little bit longer. Maybe it makes somebody laugh while they're in there washing their hands. I don't know. Certainly not trying to make light of the fact, but just, you know, putting up some different signage, trying to catch people's attention, I think, too, to the fact that we're doing the best that we can in a public building to keep the building sanitized and clean. There is no plan in place through the town down yet to close or cancel any programming. We did receive a memo from the town administrator earlier today on cleaning and making sure that we're disinfecting buildings. There's the possibility that as of next week, Fire EMS has purchased an electromagnetic sprayer, which delivers a fog for the purpose of disinfecting ambulances. But they purchased some more and they may be using them in town buildings starting next week. And they would come off hours. I spoke with Chief Gallagher very briefly about that today. So it may be that in the, when, once we close to the public, Fire EMS comes in to disinfect the building with some stronger substance than what we're using. So just so you're aware of that, Board of Health in town is suggesting that we not cancel any programs as of yet. That's one of the things I wanted to talk to you about today. But right before we met, I had gotten word that that's what his recommendation is and that people should be able to make their own decision as to whether or not they want to attend programs. We haven't, we certainly don't want to scare anyone. We have no reason to think that it's not safe to come to the library right now. So if people choose to come in, we want them to be coming in until we need to make a different decision, which he seemed to think would have to do with if the schools to make a decision as to whether or not to close. So for right now, if you would like us to keep doing programs, we will keep doing programs. If the board doesn't want us to do programs, then we can certainly go with what your advisement may be. But the Board of Health is suggesting not to cancel programming. So that's where we're at on that. And ultimately, if the decision was made from town to close public buildings, then we would need to determine what we were doing in terms of staffing. But we're not, certainly not there yet. And I think it's important for me to assure you, but also to assure the public that in the event that we were to close, we would certainly do our best to extend due dates and work with the network so that items weren't due while we're closed the same way we do with any emergency closing like a snowstorm. We would certainly waive fines of a cushionet patrons that may be affected by this if they can't get here to return anything. We would suspend their holds if needed. If they were worried that if they didn't come in and pick up an item they'd been waiting two months for and now we're closed or they can't get here, we have ways of fixing that for them. We're lucky that we have an exterior book drop. So if people are feeling like they don't want to come in the building, but they need to return items, we have that exterior book drop. And if the building itself were to be closed, we could certainly fix something that staff could come in and empty that book drop so that it's not backing up. Because as you know, it backs up on a three-day weekend. So perhaps if we were closed, you could back up. So this is all, I think the reason why I really wanted to make sure I bring this up to you today is it's certainly on our radar. It's on my radar. I've been in contact with the town as best that I can be. We were already doing a lot of these, you know, disinfecting things. We're keeping it up more. But I think the big thing is programming now. And if you would like us to keep doing the programming, then I'm, you know, I think the staff and I support the idea coming from the Board of Health that we keep going if there's no reason not to. And if people choose to come here, then we're going to let them.
I think it's a good idea to let people choose. I mean, if they don't want to come, then they don't, but they could, rather than just canceling. I'm sure the Board of Health will revisit as more information comes available anyway. So the recommendation could change and then at that time.
Right, and why cancel now because it might act enough and why do it?
Exactly, right. I agree. Everyone else agree?
The other thing, I mean, as we're meeting in the children's room today, which is a little different. And that's because I messed up on the calendar and I didn't want to turn the young people away who came to use our switch, the switch program. Normally, we meet on Wednesdays. So when Sandra came to me and said, "I'm thinking about putting that program on a Thursday", I said, "Great, that looks great." And then last week, when I was getting this agenda together, I went, "Oh, shoot." But anyway, we're in the children's room where we have removed our train table, our Lego table and our puzzles. A lot of libraries throughout the state are doing that. That's been coming through on our listservs all day because we cannot disinfect those throughout the day. Lego table, the pieces are so small. We don't do a daily disinfecting of that to begin with. And we certainly couldn't do it multiple times a day. So I did make the decision this morning that the best thing to do is just to remove it from the room prior to opening today. So we weren't worried about that. We've had a couple of people who have come in to use those items today and have done something else here instead. But, you know, once we have, we're able to disinfect it and we feel it's safe to bring those kinds of things back into the room, we of course will because we know that's a good draw for a lot of our young patrons.
It's the first thing my granddaughter goes to.
It's the first thing a lot of them, it's a lot of time you do. First thing a lot of them go to. And it's great when parents or grandparents are browsing to find books to bring home. It gives the, you know, kids something to do if they're not helping in that moment to choose books. So we know that there's a lot of kids throughout this community who enjoy using those items. But we did feel for safety's sake, the best thing, rather be safe than sorry. And this will give us a good chance to properly disinfect those items also.
Do you want us to vote on that?
I don't think you need to vote on it. I mean, if you wanted to, you certainly could, but I don't think you need to. I think if we were canceling programs, we would need to. But I think in just the discussion, it's okay to just proceed as is.
That sounds good. We'll proceed as is. Programs are still as scheduled.
Okay, great.
I think the school department sent out something.
They did. Give three is, you said, yeah.
School always sends something out.
And I think they're just sort of.
Being vigilant.
Vigilant, right, which is what I think everyone should be doing. But we also, there's, you know, you don't want to make anyone panic. I think there's, you know, yes, there's a serious thing going on, but it's good to remain. To find my director's report to get to the rest of it. Got it?
No.
Hang on. Too many papers. Census, census, census. Thank you. Thanks. My statistics. Okay, all right. Of course now, my highlights on mine. That's okay. I can do this real quick. Well, I'll start out with the statistics. You have January and February. I'm with you. February's on the backside. We did have a slight dip in circulation in January, only in the non-print categories when I do the year-to-year comparison. Children's books, you'll see there's still that increased slight dip in adult and YA, but that isn't concerning to me. Certainly also not concerning to me because then we went right back up in February when you do the year-to-year comparison, or we stayed pretty steady. Though we got that 20%, over 20% increase in the circulation of children's books, which is pretty amazing when you do the year-to-year comparison. The programs are pretty steady. Our computer use, I don't do the year-to-year comparison for you, but when I ran the numbers, our computer use is up probably by about 40%. And I think that's because we do have an awful lot of people who run in here just to print something. They have a device where they can access the internet, but they don't have a printer. So that certainly is, I think, a key reason why a lot of people are using our computers. Because that is a consistently increased number. And everything else has stayed pretty stable. The, I think after being at a standstill for a long time, we're finally seeing, which I know we talked about before, but I'll reiterate, the increase in downloadable eBooks and e-audio. Our hoopla, hoopla circulation is definitely up. And I think that's just going to continue as more and more people are becoming familiar with downloadable products and where our patrons maybe are becoming a little more comfortable with using that resource. I think our numbers look good statistics-wise. We've just had a few minor building things. We had an issue with the copy machine back in January. As a reminder, the Friends have an annual contract that they maintain for the copy machine. So that came at no expense to the library and no additional expense to the Friends. It was all covered under the contract and the copier's been fine since. We did have a light that was blown out or the fixture was blown out. We got that taken care of. Just scrolling through, I think everything else is pretty status quo. Oh, yeah, our bathroom issues. So right before I went to Nashville, we had another issue with the women's room being clogged. The DPW and Bass Ready Router both felt that that was leftover paper in the pipes from when they had cleared the clogs back in January. So that bill ended up being right around $300. We have a fair amount left in our building and grounds line for this fiscal year. So I'm going to go to the grounds to cover that and they've been fine since.
Is that what that cleanout is up there?
Yes. Yeah, they had put that in, the DPW had put that in two years ago because that had come at the recommendation of a plumber who felt that the cleanout in the basement, it was too difficult to get to the pipes. So he recommended putting one outside as well. And so the DPW put that in two years ago and then had to dig it up, which is why you're now seeing it because they have to be able to access it. Yeah, that's, I think those were my highlights. Sorry for being a little disorganized. I'm sure that's right here as soon as the meeting is done. I missed it. That's all I have. Okay, unless you have anything.
I don't have anything.
Does anyone else have anything?
You want to set the date for the next meeting?
Of course, I think that should be just depending on any developments with. Anything, I may have to call a meeting earlier or we may have to postpone. But looking at April, can we, if we can go back to Wednesdays, that'd be great, first of all. But we could do Wednesday, April 1st, for the eighth in the afternoon.
The eighth works better than the, does that work for everybody else? At 4:30 again, that'd be great. Does that work for everybody?
All right. And just looked at sticker, make sure I mind.
Oh, my sticker, yes.
So we have two more days. So I don't know if anyone will see this, but we have two more days to donate pajamas for the Boston Bruins Pajama Drive. And as of this week, our patrons have donated over 70 pairs of pajamas, which is really great.
Awesome.
Yeah, so thank you very much to everyone who donated pajamas. The pajamas are distributed locally, so anything that was donated will benefit local babies, kids and teens in need. So that's great and I appreciate greatly that people have been so supportive of that program.
Over seven?
Over seven, yes.
That's amazing.
Which is about 10 times what we had last year. Yes, we had a very small amount last year. I think it's helped that the staff have worn their PJs on select days to promote the drive.
I've brought in a couple and they.
Thank you.
They had the basket.
Yes, yeah, it's like overflowing. Some people have thought that we're selling pajamas. We've had a couple of people ask about purchasing them.
I was throwing on hinges and I just hung it up, so maybe that's.
No, but we thought that was because that calls attention to it when they're hung. So we, yeah, we love the idea of hanging them around the basket. But now it looks like, yeah, or sale items. But no, this has been a pajama drive to benefit local kids in need of some nice pajamas. So anyway, so thank you for that. Sorry.
Sorry. All right, if we have no other business, I'm going to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.